Welcome, we're gonna go ahead and call the council meeting in order. If you could, please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, in the best will, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Roll call, looks like we got all council present and staff, so we're there. And we're on to consent agenda. Looks like we have approval for looking at some minutes from the January 30th meeting. It was a work session as well as a February 13th city council meeting as well as a public hearing that we had.
I move the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
We'll second that, take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you. Alright, and just in time. What was that? We good? It's all up to you Sergeant, thanks for coming in.
Alright, kind of an uneventful month, which is fantastic. One thing I wanted to note, you'll see there was a big theft at Humpty's. We didn't put the dollar amount in there to begin with because we didn't know how long it would take us to find this gentleman. Long story short, somebody who works for Humpty's took the cash that they had received during the day in lottery proceeds and put it in their car unlocked, which is a little over thirty-five thousand dollars.
Good.
Another coworker saw that and stole it. And we actually ended up doing an operation yesterday in Salem and arrested him. Shocker, he was stolen vehicle, no money, he has spent it all, but we made an arrest to close that case. So, don't put valuable things in your vehicle if you choose to do so, lock it. But, that took a lot of manpower and time, looking at videos and follow-up and traveling back and forth to Salem to try to find the guy. But, made an arrest late last night, which is awesome.
And it was, he spent it all, is that right? Is that what you said? It was all gone?
Oh yeah.
He put it in a 401K.
Yeah.
Couple of flash screen DVDs.
Yeah.
Crashes typically, in Millersburg, we see the crashes are more related to semis. Two crashes this last month were from semis and one because a spider fell on someone's lap.
I'm scared of spiders as well. Not sure if I'd crash over it.
Arrests, one was related to a mortgage and the other one was criminal mischief, a neighbor cut the cable line.
I saw that.
Another neighbor, have a neighbor dispute there. Citations were issued for various things, cell phones insurance, struggling with the suspended driver's license, speed, window tint. You cannot drive with purple lights, purple headlights on your vehicles, you'll be taken for that also. Yeah, that's about it. I have a story to share too. Everyone knows what this is. Kevin has a heart of gold, called me the other day because a gentleman came, came to City Hall because he was wet and cold. Kevin invited him in and helped him.
Did not invite him.
Gave, gave me a call and I went to transport that mail to a homeless shelter, but he had a pro war for robbery. So, he went to the jail, Kevin lent me a bungee cord so I could take his bike with him.
We bought big zip ties right after he left, so next time we're prepared.
Is that to cuff him with or to tie the bike?
Both, both, yeah, multi-purpose.
Yeah, so he came here looking for help, he definitely went to jail.
I offered him, I said, we'd be more than happy to call the sheriff's office and see if you would like, you know, if you'd like a ride back into Albany because he was not sure how to get back into Albany and stuff and thought it might help him get along the way. And his response was, sure, that'd be fantastic, so.
He goes, has any guy here who's a ride, great.
So. As he's running his number, he leans over to me and says, yeah, he's gonna ride to someplace else. And the guy, he looks, you know, and he gets off the radio, the guy looks at him and goes, I'm going to jail, aren't I?
The property crime looks, I mean, I don't think we had any, which is great. Any, any month you don't have any is great, other, you know, I wouldn't necessarily consider like a neighbor on neighbor of random property crime. We didn't have any car break-ins stuff, anything like that, no vandalism, so that's all fantastic. Questions, comments, concerns?
I just, I noted twenty-one warnings, traffic warnings, and it's a lot of those were, it was clear that you were set up. On Old Salem here, looked like quite a few police warnings of, hey, keep the, keep it down. But twenty-one's a little high, it seems high for a month, but.
It depends what the citations are.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually your warnings are like a third of what the citations are.
Okay.
Yeah.
That clock's out about right.
Yeah, seeing eight to twenty-one, yeah, it doesn't concern me. And it's just discretion whether they're being stopped for like five or six over or they're being stopped for twenty or thirty over. So, if it was like they're being stopped for five or six over because they want to look or have suspicion of something else, that's a lot different than stopping a car that's doing seventy-five.
Sure, right, yeah, alright. Council, any questions for Sergeant?
Good one, appreciate it.
Alright, that was, thanks.
I can help you with your stats anytime.
Thanks for your service. Alright, we're on to public, public comment. This is an opportunity to come forward and speak with council, share your thoughts, questions. And do we have anyone online?
No one online.
Alright, okay. And we'll go down to council and staff comments, I have a few things to cover with staff. So, last, our work session as well as our last council meeting, we talked about weekly, and we got, oh, we do have slides, I was curious what it would look like. Good, alright. Yeah, we talked about the weekly yard debris pickup consideration. And at the work session as well as at our council, last council meeting, we, I feel like we have a consensus on moving forward with that. I thought this would be a council meeting to continue that conversation and potentially move forward with a motion. It, from notes, it looks like it would add a dollar ninety-five to our monthly bill, but also there's some options to, you know, share that and maybe even lower if we reduce our size of our, of our garbage and then you could recycle food and waste. Julie, you're here tonight, is maybe an opportunity to come forward and talk anymore about that, or I don't want to put you on the spot. At least you're here to answer questions maybe, and, but I know moving forward, this is probably something we're, we're least considering. And I know one question would be is if we do take a vote tonight and it's approved, how timely, when, when, when this service could start?
Yeah, exactly. I, I really don't have any other presentation to make except to tell you that I know two counselors with downtown's cards already. And to say that we think the first full week of April is the appropriate time to start. I did get hold of Kevin and say, hey, because this is such a used service in the months of April and May, especially March, April, May, we think it's really appropriate to, to start then because it's really about new people there. But other than that, I really don't have anything, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but the first full week of April. And he just reminded me that Monday is the service day here in Millersburg anyway, so starting on that Monday seems appropriate.
Okay, another, one thing is trying to get the word out. And maybe if we did move forward with that, is, is that something you'd be able to help us with and, and potentially drive that? Maybe that is a great opportunity to start talking about the downsizing or the, you know, the options that, that were shared during our work session. And then as well as that, this is what's coming forward. Again, we haven't taken a vote, but I do feel like this is the direction we're wanting to go in. Is that something you'd be able to help us with or be able to, to drive like a mailer out to the community and, and provide some additional information, probably a good opportunity for outreach as well as with some of the other, you know, whatever other stuff you have going on, recycle, the app is a good, a good option. I, I have now. But, yeah, so I, I don't know.
You know, we, we have a lot of options. One, I think that we've done, the, the great part is we just did this in Dallas, we did a two-weekly recycling, and we wanted to have a recycling event. And so, we just worked through this in the last two or three weeks. And we have a flyer that, that just needs to be updated just for yard debris, not recycling included, so we have that ready to go. And it's something that can go on the city's website and our website and on the app. We can send it out as an email to everyone in Millersburg, we have an email address for. We can do a billing insert. We have, I have mixed feelings about that because if you're like most people, you open it up and you put everything hopefully in the recycling and never take a look at it. But we can do that if that's a wish of the council. We can also do a call blast on the, you know, we kind of decide how far ahead of time you'd like us to do it. Tend to do it maybe, let's say that, I don't think weekends are a good time for a call blast, but we tend to do it maybe the Thursday prior to that first Monday to say, hey, just a reminder that you can put your yard debris card out every Monday from here on out, or whatever that looks like. I think those call blasts work pretty well, we can kind of do whatever you'd like. And then we think your reader board is a really great resource as well. So, kind of take our direction from you, we have a lot of options.
So, April 1st is a Monday, are you thinking April 1st start or April 8th?
We're thinking April 1st.
Okay, no fool.
Everyone's thinking of, is this a joke? Right, right, well, I think we would take the direction from you on that, on how to reach the most, you know, the most benefit. There, like you say, the billing might, might get missed, you know, so maybe a flyer, a call blast, and then a reader board or something like that. Might be, I would definitely want to get the word out and make sure everyone's aware that, hey, this is changing, this is coming, so.
Well, I don't think a lot of people have that, at least I don't, I think a lot of people have it, you're gonna get the mailing, so.
Yeah, if you have the app, you probably check that you want to be taken with you, if you're campus, you want to be there.
But the call blast works great except for one person I know that doesn't get phone calls.
I think he's updated it.
I, I do, I updated it. I went on and I like, oh, they don't have my phone number, it's like, no wonder I'm not getting phone calls. Yeah.
But I do think, think the flyers would be good because I do think the information you gave us earlier, just in the different sizes of the, because I know I'm one of the ones who, who downsized.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, going from the largest to the next one down saved a few bucks and we haven't noticed a difference. It's, so I mean, I didn't realize that one was available, so.
Well, and then the other thing is, coming up, I don't remember the date, but Kenny is working with Matt to put together kind of a live stream, recycling outreach kind of event, and I think when we talk about recycling, we can definitely talk about food waste composting and all the things that go in that organic part too, so that'll be a great tutorial for that as well.
That'll be good, I know we talked about that in our work session, so that's great.
Yeah, because it's a little bit confusing, I talked to Kevin in Dallas today, he was like, well, what do you mean food waste? And I said, well, everything that's food, bones, yes, bones, everything, I would say, everything that comes off the Thanksgiving table, the carcass, the jerky, the, you know, everything. But, and here's a good thing for you all to know, everything but liquids, no liquids, and no fats, so we don't want, you can't, you can't use the five gallons of peanut oil that you deep fried it with. Other than that, everything else.
Everything else.
Why not?
Why not? I bet. Okay, well, I, I, I think this is a, it's a good move, I know it's been talked about quite a bit. And I'll go in, motion that the city of Millersburg goes from every other week to a, a weekly pickup of yard debris at the current price of whatever, I believe it was a dollar ninety-five increase. That's my motion.
Second.
We got a second, we'll take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, alright, motion passes. And, and I guess with that, I would say then let's move forward with the motion. We didn't really talk about timeframe, but I think the April 1st, if we can get it out there sooner the better, and, yeah, and. And, yeah, let's have staff work just to make sure we get the, the reader board up, right, and the call blast as well as the flyer out there. And I think that's all unless there's questions, staff, you have any questions? Alright.
I appreciate the care with which you made this decision. Took plenty of time and I think you listened to what people had to say, and I think that worked best, so we really appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, thanks for coming Julie. And you guys too, Steph. Alright, great, moving on, Millersburg celebration update, I was gonna speak to that a little bit. Our last meeting, a lot of, to you guys, a lot of decisions were made and, and just conversation. And so, I have some dates to announce that our Millersburg celebration is going to be September 7th. And it starts at 1:00 PM and it will end around 10:00 PM, it's gonna be at the park. I'm gonna talk a little bit, in a little bit about the events there, but another save the date is a farmer's market is going to go and start June 5th and go to August 28th, it's gonna be every Wednesday starting on June 5th, and that's also at the park. And so, we're gonna have a farmer's market. And then final was the 50th recognition event to sort of bring out what we're celebrating our fifty years of, of being a, a city, incorporated city. And the, we sort of left it in the hands of the committee and they, you know, after different ideas, came to a drone event, a show, which I think I've, I've talked a little bit about that at council in the past. But they landed on that, they were able to work with a vendor and they're really wanting to move forward with, with a drone event of June 29th. And it's a event that would have about a hundred and fifty drones who'd go up and it would, it's, it would display whatever we really want. They have their own type designs, I'm sure some of us have seen that on, on some social media or maybe even in, 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 in real world. You know, I, I've never seen it myself, but I've, I've seen it on social media and it looks pretty cool. And it's not a long event, but it's, it'd be something to just recognize, recognize and kick off the summer of the 50th anniversary of our city. And again, that was, the plan was to be June 29th and the location would be in the evening, so time would come out on that. But would be potentially here at City Hall or at the park. And there's some logistical things that we have to work through on that, but those are some of the thoughts with, with those three events.
Wouldn't the attendees be at the park and weren't they gonna sit up like over here?
That's, it's very possible that you should be able to see it from the park if it was set up here and, or vice versa. And it's just about logistics of maybe trying to get as many people to a location. And so, it's, it's still logistical, the big key is that wherever the drones fly, they cannot have anyone underneath there and, and for safety reasons. And I know, staff, you've looked at some location here as well as a little bit maybe at, at the park or, I mean, there's some doable space. I mean, it's, it just comes down to logistics on that. But I just wanted to share with you those dates, that's what they've landed on for those, for the Millersburg celebration. Again, September 7th, the farmer's market's starting Wednesday, June 5th, and it would be every Wednesday. And then the recognition of fifty years on June 29th in the evening.
For the farmer's market, when do they plan on shutting it off, first week in September?
Yeah, August, actually August 28th. Yeah, it's about twelve, I'm, I'm guessing they probably won't do the Fourth of July week, but, so it's about twelve, twelve sessions. And we'll see how it goes, attendance might make it shorter, but they're trying to get that back and, 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 and doing that. And then bringing our partners with agricultural group and, and see where, where it goes. I know it was, seemed like it was missed when it didn't occur the last couple of years, so. So, we'll see, it's a lot of work, a lot of things going on with the committee, they're very, they're going after it and I'm, I'm excited, yeah. Yeah, they need volunteers, so if anyone's out in the audience here or online, volunteers are always needed. I think we're gonna be voting a little bit later on you as a potential member, but I, those, those, those are the dates, so any questions about that? I, I do want to talk about the events that they, they would like to try to do on the celebration, but the date's good. I was a little nervous about the June 29th date, I really, I mean, it's about a ten, fifteen minute event, the drones. It's not a long event, but it'd be great to have council, you know, present or, I actually know and sure if it's, if, I don't, I guess I would say, I would like you guys to be able to experience it. I, again, I think it's just gonna be a, a show, it's not gonna be a, some kind of presentation or anything like that. At least that's not where we are right now, now we could, as council, change that, but that's, that's the plan is doing a, a drone show and just sort of kick off the summer. Sound good? Yeah, I don't think they'll let you.
They don't even fly them, the computer does all the work.
Yeah, 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 they don't even fly them, they just hit a button probably. And it will have, I think I heard music too, they, they talked about that, they, yeah, potentially, so. So, with that, the events committee also, so the events that they're looking at doing for the celebration, they really do want to get that car show back, so they're gonna work on getting a car show, nothing as big as, as we've had before. I think we've had almost two hundred, two hundred cars, maybe over, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, two hundred cars, cars. They're looking at fifty to sixty and cutting it off at that size initially, just getting things back in order, it's that, that's what is the number. There will be a music DJ, not live music, but just a DJ, there's gonna be a kids' own activities. There's gonna be a bingo for prizes with games, additional games. And then there's gonna be, of course, the food trucks with an adult beverage zone. That's the goal and that's the, that's the hope and of, of moving forward with the, with the, the events of the celebration. So, that's my report about that, questions about the, the committee and where they're going? What's that? Oh gosh, I missed the movie, that was the best part, that's that last part, movie, movie in the park, thank you. So, it's gonna end actually with a movie, big screen. And, and there's gonna be concessions that we talked about, potentially South Albany, being that's our school of coming in and, and potentially a, a opportunity to fundraise for activities, maybe they're, the different activities that you do and, and it'd be the fundraiser for them, but it's gonna be the movie and, you remember the movie? Oh, Sandlot, Sandlot, that's right, so. Yeah, that's the, that's the plan, so, yeah, Sandlot, is that right? Yeah, Sandlot, yeah, and, so I forgot about it, thanks for bringing that up, Janelle. Questions? Lot of stuff. Come on up. The question is about hours?
What time of day?
Hi, I'm Doug, I live on Somme.
Okay.
I didn't catch any hours for the farmer's market.
Yeah, that, that hasn't been established, at least I don't, do you remember, she, was that talked about, it was like, maybe six o'clock?
For, they're leaning for toward a seven.
Oh, four. Yeah, so it's, put that down, yeah, ish. It's still coming, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of advertisement and stuff like that, but I just wanted to get those dates out and sort of get the council up to, up to speed on where they're going, what's happening. Yeah, no, no, yeah, I didn't, I honestly didn't have anything down here, so four to seven, yeah. Alright, cool, anything else sir? Good? Nope, alright. If, no questions for me, that's the end of my report. Alright, thank you, we're gonna move on to city manager's report.
We will start off the transition parkway. We haven't done a transition parkway update for a little bit, I know it was gone last month, so that's part of the reason. Where we stand right now, we're ninety percent plus complete on the design. So, what that means is the design is essentially done, but we have some outstanding items and some of those are timeframes that are a little outside of our control right now. So, one, the project DeLorean water and driveway connections, we're trying to coordinate with that project and work that into our design, so we're not tearing up any road to do those connections. Funding timing is probably the biggest one. So, we are expecting grant funds from the state for the job creation associated with that project and possibly another project in the future. And so, we're needing to get those things settled before we go out to bid. We need to make sure, of course, that we have all the funds committed to the project before we go ask contractors to spend a lot of time pricing them. I'm gonna skip down to permitting for a second, so we are, we have received some of our permits, but not all. So, we have wetland permits and we have erosion sediment control permits that we need to get from the state and from Army Corps of Engineers. So, we're waiting on our Army Corps permit for wetlands, but we are very close on that. And then we're working through our 1200C erosion sediment control permit with the state. And that is, we should have those things wrapped up in the next couple of months. Again, those are things we can go to bid without having in hand, you put a placeholder and tell the contractor you're gonna have them before they start construction, but it's always nice to have them in the bid package if you can, so. And then the other thing we're thinking through is do we do this all as one project, which is how it's been designed? What you see on the screen there as far as the whole length of transition parkway, it's designed as one project. However, from a funding standpoint, if we don't have the funding to build that whole project at once, we will probably build it in two phases. So, an eastern half and a western half, it's not really half, it's about a third, eastern third. There's a natural breakpoint there, a high point of the road, which works for stormwater, those sorts of things. We need to think through where you would, where you would transition, where you would have an end for one phase and start the next. So, if we decide to split this project into two, and we might need to do that in order to get the eastern part built to support the project that's coming in there, there will be some additional engineering cost and time to do that because we're taking, again, one set of documents and we're gonna, we're gonna have to add some details and some sheets to say, how do you end this? Right here, and how do you transition? And we also have to repackage it for bidding. So, that additional engineering cost estimate is about a hundred thousand dollars to do that. So, we really don't want to do this if we don't have to, but if we have to, it's part of getting the project done. So, that's, that's why we're waiting and that bid schedule, what says there's summer versus fall. At this point, if we, if I told our engineers tomorrow, we want to go to bid as soon as possible, we're a couple of months out, six, six to eight weeks out just because there's these pieces, there's a little bit of utility coordination as well that still needs to take place at the end here. We coordinated, we've sent utility notification letters to all the utilities in the area, but if we build half the project now, the impacts are different than if we build the whole thing. So, again, that, those last pieces, we know what they are, we know what needs to happen. We're just waiting right at the moment to make the decision on whether it's gonna be one project versus two. So, that means, you know, our bid schedule will probably be going to bid in the So that means, you know, our bid schedule will probably be going to bid in the summer or the fall. And one or the other. You guys have any questions on that?
Yeah, other than funding and it's a sort of a big, obviously a big hurdle. So I, I mean, unless we get a really big gift. Is it even realistic that we'd be able to hit the mark of?
It is, yeah. Yeah, so we've talked about this way back from the beginning, this project, but it'll be funded by property sales. Grants from the state associated with the job creation and investment and then system development charges. So those three pieces of funding will come together to build the project. But the challenge is with timing. If we have the funds only to build the eastern half of it, which we will for sure have that. Then we go ahead with that. If we could build the whole project at once, of course, that would be most efficient. We'll get it all done at the same time under one contract. But it's not necessarily required because that the eastern part that we need for that project, that the traffic from that project won't be heading west. They don't need that western extension. And it won't change any traffic on Conser Road. So we aren't making the situation worse by not building the whole thing upfront. It's developing further to the west that really requires that for its access. And of course, we'd like to just have it done and ready to go. And one other piece, which will be at the end of the agenda, but there's an opportunity to apply for some grant funds for parks coming up. And Matt's gonna talk about that a little bit when we get there. So that could bring another piece of funding in.
Thank you.
I have one additional item, the ongoing saga of the tanks across the street. So just wanted to give you an update. Everything, all of the contracts have been let where the holdup right now is with the company that is doing the removal. They, with their schedule, which they had, they thought they would be completed with another job, actually two different jobs. Prior, they're bringing in two, most of the tanks are gonna be dealt with with shears. So large shears will be crane mounted shears and the shears are not available. So they're looking, last we heard, it was probably two weeks for the shears to be available. So as soon as they have confirmation on that, they'll come in, start taking the fence interior fences down and getting their access. But that's how they're planning on taking those apart is using large shears. They're still hopeful that that it'll be projects will complete within a month once they start. But we'll we'll see, given what we've seen. But that is the the latest as of Friday.
All right, large shears.
I mean, we start finding them, they'll find the shears real quick.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting to that point, aren't we?
Yeah, I'm there.
Yeah, you're there.
And we have shared that we're a year late.
Yeah, yeah, I remember it's supposed to be done before it was in December or something like that, before the year was out. Yeah, okay, well, let's have that conversation next council meeting if it's not, actually, you said two weeks out, right?
That's what they told us.
All right. Same fear? Yeah, I'm I'm there too.
We can let them, I have no problem letting them know.
Yeah, we've been nice enough thus far, yeah. Thank you. All right, is that is that it? Okay. City Attorney's report, anything to report on?
Yes, I have three things that we wanted to give you all an update on. One is the DeLorean project closing is anticipated to happen before the next council meeting. So some of that funding for the transition Parkway should be coming in the doors pretty soon. And the franchise agreement with Republic Services is is through its initial draft. Alan needs to go through and kind of finalize that. And then that will be sent to Kevin and Mel Perk comments and review. And then finally, for, do you have a picture of the donation? No?
It's the next slide.
Okay, so do you want to update on that or would you like me to go over it?
We can update on that and you can fill in any.
Perfect. So those were the only three things Alan wanted me to cover.
Great. Yeah, it's good news to hear that you work on the franchise agreement. It wasn't true. We've had a lot of discussion about it, but thank you for getting that done. Okay, we'll write into the land donations that would be the topic.
I think we've talked about this before. So that's why it's under unfinished business. So these are the two tracts of land we're talking about that Conser Homes and Jake Conser and Sons would like to donate to the city. Go to the next one then. They are contiguous with the blue there is other city owned properties. As you can see, they're connected to those, they're continuations of drainage ways. The the one that's farther to the west on the left side was not previously donated when the others were just because there was a property transaction going on and they kept ownership of it while another entity had ownership of the other parcels. This was always planned that they were going to eventually ask to donate to us. The one in the east is a remnant from one of the first subdivisions that went into Millersburg, actually. And it was supposed to be part of the blue that surrounds it was wetland mitigation for the rest of the project. And that little red rectangle mostly didn't take. And so they weren't able to use it as mitigation and ended up just a spare tract of land. So now they're ready.
I'm thrilled that it's here before you for a donation because about every two years, they would call up and we'd fight for two months about putting houses on it. And so I'm very glad it's on the agenda to give to the city.
It's also a very convenient place to for us to get in along the creek there and check on how it's going and get access for maintenance if we need to, so.
And Dave and Scott may recognize this. So if you look at the blue that's between the the two red and surrounding that, that was probably one of the first things when I became acting city manager in November of two thousand seventeen, that we that was brought in, donated to the city under a very fast. Well, they've been working on it with the previous city manager and hadn't gotten done. So at the eleventh hour, a number of things were done and the city brought that property. That property was donated to the city in two thousand seventeen. So this really cleans up those two outstanding parcels that that didn't get caught at that time.
Quick question back to that. Do we have, is there no property up the creek towards or down the creek? I guess it'd be towards Millsburg Drive? That we, yeah, is that all just private?
This is owned by the each way for this track and then these are all private up here.
So there's no continuance to the future park?
Only if someone wanted to.
Develop, donate.
A lot of these property owners are are constantly asking us because they're ready to sell us the property we need to make the trail happen, so. If if and when the council so decides to.
Yeah.
To be consistent with our master plans.
Yeah.
So I would just add that all the things that are necessary, so the resolutions, warranty deeds, the donation agreements as far as looking to make sure that the value is there with the properties, if you want to add anything about that. Alan's reviewed and and we're good, good to go.
And the only thing I think he wanted to add was that the appraised value is being established only for tax reporting purposes.
Question, council, any questions? The resolution or resolution of twenty twenty four dash zero three in front of us for acceptance for the donation.
I move the council adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three.
Second half. All right, we got a second. We'll take a vote. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, all pose same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to new business and it looks like first line of new business is appoint a budget officer.
I'll talk for a minute about the meetings before we get to.
Okay, yeah.
Through those on the slide as well. April thirtieth and May ninth are the proposed meetings for the Budget Committee. Sheena's reached out. I think she's gotten confirmation from most, maybe not quite all. So consider those tentative until you get the final email that says those are the dates and up meetings. Typically, they're at six o'clock. And we'll be adopting the budget at our regular June council meeting. Here's the plan.
All right, thank you.
And I I would just add, once we have those dates confirmed by by council, we'll send out a budget calendar. So to all the budget committee members.
All right, and so it looks like we need a budget committee officer. So with that, of course, it's council and then we have a number of, how many from the community? Five, five. So it's a big group. And yes.
So I see. So we need to appoint a budget officer. I'm just curious with the projects that we're talking about bringing in. More revenue coming in, whether that's tax, whatever. Are we getting close to the point? Because it seems like this is getting to be, I could have assumed that it's getting to be a lot for you to take on. So are we getting to the point that do we have to start looking at bringing in, say, a budget position as a permanent position for the city?
So the budget officer's position is pretty much a title only, so we're still gonna be working on the budget. It is something we're gonna need to be looking at as we move forward. So so yes, but the other thing to keep in mind, we will probably be, you know, once we see these projects come on, it's gonna be a while before we see the full revenue. We'll start seeing, you know, Northwest RE, you know, once they start, you know, once they come onto the rules, we have a clawback, clawback provision. So we'll start seeing some more revenue coming in from that and then we'll see increases in franchise fees. So it's gonna be really a timing of looking at those, some things. And we will be proposing some things coming up in the budget. Coming up in as we start going through that. Or looking at, you know, just how we're looking at, you know, transitioning out and things forwards.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have the staff available so that we make sure we don't have any accounting errors or anything like that to be able to count for anything that's starting to get to be a lot, so.
When you think about accounting, Sheena's probably doing most of our accounting with our, or their office staff with specific roles that they do. The budget, like Kevin said, at this point at least, I mean, we're gonna be very involved in the budget itself, developing the budget. Whoever is appointed as the budget officer, so.
Just curious, thank you.
But thank you, yeah. And it is something that we've talked about that we will need to to look at. And if, you know, I don't know that it's a separate position, but maybe looking at, you know, as we increase our, you know, as we do an evaluation of what our staffing is and things overall.
We'll be proposing some staffing, future things in the upcoming budget year when we get into the budget meetings. So we'll go over all of that with you.
All right. Mark, you were budget officer last last year? So it's, oh, it's always staff?
This is usually a staff position.
Okay, well then.
You'll elect a chair at the first.
That's it. That's, yeah, that's what I was wondering, like, do we do this every year as a budget officer? So who's did it last time? Okay, I motioned to Janelle as our appointed budget officer.
The hair bow is optional, though. You don't need the hair bow in order to have. I did not let Matt put the graphic key out there. Had a different one.
He had a different one. I told him, I said, no.
I definitely want to see the pink piggy bank.
There we go. I like that.
We will have a piggy bank meeting.
Did we get a second on that? Oh, wait, we have a second? All right, I'll close out the the motions on that or whatever. Take a vote. All in favor of elect Janelle as our budget officer, signify by aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes. All right, and now we're on to committee event committee appointment. That's you, Robert. We got your packet here. And I looked at it. You've attended our, our, you've attended two of our meetings, actually, right? Yeah, and it looks like you're tied to the the Grange. How many years with the Grange? Oh, wow, okay. There we go. Yeah, anything, anything you want, yeah, your information's here. You you came to the council meeting. Did you want to come forward and speak to us or? Okay, all right, just giving you that opportunity. So appreciate you coming to the meetings. Motion that we accept Robert Richardson, Jr. as events committee appoint appointment. Second half. Hey, we got a second. Take a vote. Everyone in favor, signify by aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes. Thanks. We'll see you at the next meeting and appreciate all the help. We definitely, the group's going in full bore. So onward, we will go to health insurance.
As we discussed, I gave you a brief overview last month, but our health insurance plan is due for renewal on April first. Our current insurance broker, Aldrich Advisors, notified us that our healthcare provider had provided us new rates. And we were looking, looking at a fifteen point five percent increase on our non-HSA HSA plan with a family plan being eighteen seventy five. Fifty percent takes would take us to twenty seventy nine. So if you look at what our experience has been those since twenty nineteen, we've seen a five point three, a point three. We actually saw a five percent decrease in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we're at eight, nine, and then this year they're proposing fifteen point five. So the average, there has been about a five percent, has been a five percent increase. The five year national average has been twenty two to twenty seven. And our broker believes those increases we have experienced in the last two years are corrections to bring them in line. But what we're seeing, it's not uncommon, I'm hearing from others that I've talked with that are looking at thirty percent rate increases. And a lot of, a lot of others. So it's one of those things that we're starting to see in the healthcare industry, things picking up. But with that, we started taking a look at what our other options were. In two thousand nineteen, we took a look at City County Insurance, who has our property and our viability and everything else with us. They're part of the League of Oregon Cities and we have asked them to come in and give us some things. So we have that. They provide health benefits through Regents, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. It's been over seventy years. They started with them in the forties. We are not tied. So a lot of times when you go to this, like if you wanted to look at going to some of the state programs and stuff, if you were to look at going to that, you're locked into them. You, once you, once you commit, you're there forever. That's not the case with CIS. We can always go back if we wanted to. But we asked them to provide us some some numbers. I'm going to just go over this with you. Right now, recommendation is taking a look at going with transferring over to Blue Cross, Blue Shield. So if we look at our current healthcare, so our monthly costs, this is, we have there would be based on twenty twenty four fiscal year. So looking at Providence, we would be looking at for this year. So our, Madam, if you can enlarge that some. All right, so you can see effective April first, our monthly payment would be ninety seven seventy six. So from, so if we were to look at at the new fiscal year, so for the first nine, first eight months, we'd be at seventy eight thousand. Figuring a five percent increase, which we have, you know, just throwing that in there, we'd be at forty one thousand for a total of a hundred and nineteen. Going to Regents, a plan that would be comparable right now, our increase would be to eighty eight twenty seven. So that's about a four point two percent as of April first. That would be a four point two, six percent increase above where we are currently at about, I think it was eighty six hundred for family. I've got it down here somewhere. So we would see actually, if you were to compare, Regents goes January to January, one twenty five. They have already committed to no more. They know they're gonna have a rate increase because they're also having to do some some stuff. Their average has been four to five percent a year. But they've said that their increase in July, January of twenty twenty five would be no greater than ten percent. So they've already made that commitment to all of the enrollees in their plan. So if we look at that, figuring six months, eighty eight twenty seven, if we have that full ten percent, it could be less. We'd be looking at fifty eight, so we'd be looking at a hundred and eleven thousand. So the other thing that we have found out with them, one of the key things going to CIS, right now, we have, we pay Providence and then we have our healthcare through a program with our dental and eye vision is through MetLife, which we've had some issues with. our dental and I vision is through MetLife, which we've had some issues with. Everything would be underneath CIS's plan, so we wouldn't have multiple billings that were paid. So our dental and vision, we actually have improved dental coverage, we would see a savings of about $2,000. We currently have a basic life insurance plan through our current carrier, it's called US Able. And that $20,000 plan, we could increase to a $50,000 policy with CIS and see a savings of $1,634. So we're spending less and getting greater coverage. So our total savings there would be 12,097. We're recommending also that we discontinue our short-term disability. It's really not needed with what we allow our employees to have for sick leave and with the Oregon. Paid leave Oregon now, there really isn't a need for short-term disability. So dropping disability and adding long-term disability, which we do not currently have, at a 60% with a 6,000 max with a 90-day elimination period, we'd have an additional cost there of 1294. So we end up with net, we'd end up with significantly increased in capabilities and programs for our employees with a net savings annually of about $10,800. Their thing is CIS's plan also includes the employee assistance program, which is essentially similar to what we have today. There's no extra costs, that's just one of the services they provide. We also do not currently have the ability to provide a flexible spending plan if employees wanted to, so if someone has the others. That is something that we can do with CIS, there's 375 a month plus, there's a minimum for that, for employees that want to use, utilize that. The biggest reason is because on a flexible spending account plan, someone comes in and they say they want to have $5,000, say, set aside for kids braces, that $5,000 becomes available to them on the first month. So if they were to leave, you potentially have that liability of that remainder for the five months, for that 11 months. CIS, because they're administering the plan, they take that risk. So we would not have that risk, we wouldn't have to be the ones going back and trying to recoup that on a final pay, you know, final check or anything like that. Also Cobra and retiree health plan options, employee paid health plan options eligible for Medicare. The employees are also eligible, if they wanted to do something above 50,000 for healthcare, they can elect to do, purchase additional, not healthcare, additional life insurance above that. So as I mentioned, they've said no more than 10%, their history is 4 to 5. And like I said earlier, the cost increase going from what Providence is showing going to a comparable plan on Regents, we're looking at a 4.2% increase, which is within our budget, but 5% this year. So my recommendation would be that what we're planning on, unless anyone had any questions, we're planning on moving forward, switching over.
So I do have a question.
Yes.
So through all of those benefits, say especially the long-term and short-term disability, is there a charge on the employee side for that?
No, and there is a certain.
So it's fully funded by?
Yeah.
And I would, I would caution, though, paid leave Oregon will not cover everything, depending on salary level.
Right. We do, though, have paid hell, I mean, everyone gets paid sick leave. And I believe our max for sick leave is 600 hours, it's based on, but I think it might be higher than that as well. 650 or 660. It's in our PERS contract. When we first came into PERS, when cities first came into the PERS, they were tier one, there used to be a value for that sick leave on there. So the, for retirement, where it was an incentive not to use it. So we still have that cap and that's, and you can't come in and change your contract, so we still have, have that gap. So when you look at that, that 90 days is there. But the employees, if they want to, they can buy, purchase up, they can purchase a short term, short term. So for an example, the, when we looked at the, so for example, on our life insurance, for a $20,000 plan right now, we're paying $134 a month. The same coverage going to 50, that's having with everyone that's currently on there, going to a $50,000 plan through CIS is $37. So that puts us more in line with what other communities are offering for the way, I mean, 20,000. We did have a $2,000 spouse and children, we're dropping that, the dependent life, there's no need for it, I mean, it wasn't much. But if someone wants that, they can go to that through CIS. The other thing that's really interesting is the majority of individuals who are, who work on CIS's plans, healthcare stuff, are former Aldridge employees. So when we, I gave John Stubber our contact at Aldridge and Associates, gave him a heads up, this is what we're looking to do. He says, Kevin, he says, I could not disagree, he says, I think that's a wise move. He says, they're a great group, and he says, I know most of the people that are there. And he says, you know, for the size of group you have going in with them, he says, this makes, he says, knowing where they are and what they can offer. He says, I, I would not disagree with that at all. So the other thing that CIS is going to do is, and Providence already told us, Aldridge already told us, they will take what our employees have for deductible and their credit report and they will apply that to where they are now, since we're starting April versus June. So they're not going to lose out on anything that they've already had to that point. So that is our, our plan, unless you came back and had some big concern with us doing that. But our intent is to notify them, give John, give Aldridge a heads up, but to notify both them and CIS tomorrow.
All right, do you, I know as city manager, you can make this decision, do you need anything from a council?
I would just like general consensus, number one, because we are looking at going to from, you know, we have been offering 20,000 in line to 50,000. So that's, that is a change from what we have done, but the others are really pretty standard and switching from short-term to long-term disability, but they're all saving us. So I, from that standpoint, I would like just, you know, maybe, you know, if you're in agreement with that.
Do you know any service issues with Providence?
With Providence?
Yeah.
We haven't really had any service issues with Providence. The other thing I will say is the plan we're going to, it's comparable, instead of having a 30% copay, everything's 20%. So there's an additional savings there.
So you're going to improve everything for the staff and save the city money?
Yes.
I'm in.
Yeah. I, anything for Kevin, seems like he's done his homework.
As long as everybody gets good coverage, that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met with staff.
United Healthcare thing, like, yeah. Well, United was one of our options and we just said we can't do it because everyone, majority of our staff are with Samaritan or, or, you know, physicians are with the hospital, we said that was not an option. Motel was another one, but I know there are agencies that are seeing a 30% increase of Motel this year. So, you know, even though they're a little lower, the thing that really struck me and they, CIS just told us that they're, you know, they're going to be going out again and looking at the fact that they've been with Regents for since 1945. I think that says a lot between the partnership that they have. You know, they've provided, they've provided a good service. One thing that Regents has that Providence doesn't is, so if you have, if you do, if you have like shoulder surgery, knee surgery or something, you have to go in. If you're going through an ambulatory center, your out-of-pocket is 10% versus 30% with Providence, which is significant. They also have a preferred. I forget that. It's a, yeah, surgery plus or something like that. Essentially what it is, is a group of physicians nationwide for non-emergency proactive surgeries, that if you choose to go through to one of them, you have no out-of-pocket cost. And because a lot of times they're spread out, maybe, you know, they could be in Vancouver or Seattle or Portland or Medford or something, they will pay your travel cost if you would like to go. And the, what reason they have been able to do that, going to those contracts, is because they have the surgery centers or physicians that they're going with have a very high success rate in what they're doing. So they've been able to bring their costs together. So it's a nationwide plan, it's available throughout the nation. So it was an additional benefit there that is significant, it's not available to the province.
All right, well, definitely seems like you've done your homework on that and sounds like staff's happy with that. And as Mark brought up, if it's staff's happy and saving the city money, I think, I think we're good with that. So thanks for doing all that. All right. Next on the agenda is park grant. Matt, is that you?
Yeah, I'm guessing, we didn't talk about it beforehand, but I'm guessing Kevin wants me to cover that one. Every year, the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Department puts out a grant for something related to parks. This year, we were planning on going for a grant for construction documents for the North Park. But as it turns out, they don't fund construction documents. They would only fund that if it was part of the construction of the park. We're just not ready to pull the trigger on constructing that park yet because we don't have our 20% matching funds we need for North Park. What we do have matching funds for is our park here, the linear park on Transition Parkway. So we're going to go for a grant on that. And of course, just like it was previously, we need a resolution from our city council saying that you guys not only support it, but have budgeted our 20% match on that, seeing as how we were planning on paying for all of that ourselves. Anyway, we certainly have the match for it, so that's not a problem. And so we put together a resolution that we're hoping you folks will adopt, that will go on with the application. We haven't decided how much we're going to ask for yet. The park portion alone of this project is about 4 million, a little bit over that. We have an obligation to fund 20% of that, we could ask for everything else, we could keep it smaller to increase our chances of getting that grant. We're not sure, we haven't discussed that yet, which is why the resolution doesn't discuss specific numbers yet, but it doesn't need to.
Why would you think going smaller would increase your chances? Is there multiple?
There's a finite pot of money that they're giving out to different communities and, and we got a grant last year from them already, it was a very small one, albeit. But just giving out to the same community over and over might be something they try not to do, and so we're trying to increase our chances.
I believe the total grant's what, 35 million this year we saw?
Yeah, previously the state, they get their funds from lottery money. And in the past, it would, two years ago, it was 4 million and then last year it was 14 million, but they've seen a huge spike in lottery sales that they can't explain, they don't know why. But this year, that pot of money has increased to 34 million, it's much, much bigger than it ever was before. And so there's a lot of money to go around, which is why it's a good time to go for a larger project, for sure.
Go big, go big. Well, thanks for doing the homework on that and then bringing that up and as well as last year getting a grant for the North Old Banana, that was what helped pay for the consultant and where we are now with the North Park, but this seems like a, what was you saying, a no-brainer? But any questions for Matt?
We don't use the term no-brainer anymore.
Yeah.
It's a cursed term.
Yes. Motion that we accept, adopt the resolution 2024-04. Got seven, take a vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All post same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Thanks for the work on that, Matt. All right, closing comment from council. For me, I just got, I'm going to be out of town next council meeting. And so I will not be here for the April council meeting. And I also will not be available for the events committee, the next events committee, I can kind of bar with you on that time. But those are things that are going on with me. Any, any comments from council, closing?
I'd say the only one I have is last council meeting, we talked about performance raises and all that stuff, right, was the last council?
Yeah, it was.
It's the thoroughness of what we just listened to for the last few minutes that Kevin and the staff brought to us, that makes us pretty easy.
Yeah. Well said, I was going to say the same thing about council as well as just their, or our staff, just all the work that staff has done, as you pointed out. Council harms it, that's exactly why, you know, we have such a great team, as well as our attorneys, Margaret and Alan, working hard behind the scenes as well as staff all around. So just a lot of work going on behind the scenes and just can't praise enough to the council and the staff, or to the staff and our, and our team. So thank you very much and I think it was very well put, so thank you. Anything else before we close out?
I, I would just add on behalf of staff, you make our jobs much easier as well, so we really appreciate that. I think we have a great team. And it's because you have allowed us to hire the best, so. So a lot of it's because of you, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, on that note, closes out, meetings adjourned, thank you.